Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 9th, 2020 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can I have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America. And I pledge allegiance to our citizens, our nation, under God, under God, visible, visible.
Can I have a roll call now, Mr. Ramud?
Absolutely, Madam President. Mr. Gillett?
Please unmute yourselves.
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Trillo?
Here.
And Dr. Swasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Correspondence was received as listed on the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 9th executive session? So moved. Thank you, Judy. Can I have a second? Thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstaining? Anybody voting no?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the public meeting minutes from March 9th, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Ann. I'll take Ann as the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the public meeting minutes from March 16th?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining? Anybody voting no?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over now to Dr. Antunes for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I hope everyone enjoyed a healthy and restful spring break and had a chance to visit with family and friends virtually. As we begin week four of our virtual flexible learning plan, I'd like to once again offer my sincere thanks and gratitude to our students, staff, parents, the township, and the greater Hillsborough community for your patience, understanding, and tolerance as we continue along this journey together. This is new for every single one of us, and while I believe we are doing quite well, there will be some blips and speed bumps along the way. This is certainly predictable and to be expected. Please know that we are all working tirelessly to minimize the blips and bumps, and we'll continue to meet them head-on and communicate about them as necessary and appropriate. We are committed to getting through this pandemic together. I know that Dr. Swasan had a couple of words she wanted to say, and then after that, we'll go into our annual mandatory Board of Ed Ethics Training, which is facilitated by the board's legal counsel, Mr. Vic Lapira. I know that Dr. Swasan wanted to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Yes, I just wanted to add my thanks to Dr. Antunes', especially to our staff, who are really going above and beyond to try to make sure that the students are being successful in distance learning. I also wanted to let everybody know that we do have resources available for students as well as staff, because this is a stressful way to proceed with distance learning, and it looks like that's going to continue for some time. And if you are feeling stressed or anything, we want to make sure that everybody feels supported. So if you need help, if you're a student, please contact your guidance counselor or have your parent do so. If you're a staff member, please contact, you can also contact the guidance counselors as well, and they will make sure that we get you the support that you need. We also have an educational assistance program for anybody who's part of the HEA. I want to say to the public that I'm hopeful that everybody is abiding by the social distancing, our physical distancing regulations that the CDC has recommended. I also wanted to say to those people who are joining us via the livestream that there is an opportunity to make public comment, and you can click on the link below the livestreaming. Actually, there's a Google form under there. If you fill that out, it will be dumped right into a Google form spreadsheet on my screen here, so that when we get to that portion of public comment, I will read that out loud. Again, it's, we don't really have a question and answer period, but we are happy to hear everybody's input. And at the time, and we are only going to have one public comment session. I will close public comment. Anything that comes in afterwards, we will address either as correspondence during our next meeting, or address directly with you afterwards if it is appropriate to do so. So with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Lapira for the ethics training.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to do a brief presentation on the New Jersey School Ethics Act and the Code of Conduct, or the Code of Ethics for Board Members this evening. You may recall that I gave a presentation on this topic last year at the January 7th, 2019, board meeting, which is up on YouTube. So in order to make this a faster presentation and to avoid any repetition as much as possible, I'm going to give a very quick overview of the Act and the Code of Ethics, and then spend a brief amount of time going over updates since my last presentation. There was one advisory opinion and several decisions from the School Ethics Commission that were published between January 7th, 2019, and today. Once we do that, there'll be some time for questions, if any, at the end. So if we move to slide number three, that will show us the School Ethics Act and the School Ethics Commission. So apparently, 20 years ago, approximately 20 years ago or so, the School Ethics Act was created in order to ensure that the public could rest assured that board members are held to certain standards in order to obtain the respect and confidence of the people. So the two most important parts of that act are Section 24, which is a listing of various prohibited acts, and Section 24.1, which is the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, both of which I'll discuss later. The Act also created the School Ethics Commission, which issues advisory opinions and issues decisions when there are allegations of a violation of either the Act or the Code of Ethics. So first, I'll go over the Code of Ethics, which starts on the next slide. And there are 10 specific, I guess it's the slide after that, yeah. There are 10 specific Code of Ethics. I'm just going to read through these quickly. So A, Board Members are required to uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B says that Board Members will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C requires Board Members to confine their board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and that they will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Board Members are also required, under D, to carry out their responsibilities not to administer the schools, but together with their fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E says that they will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. On the next slide, we have additional parts of the Code of Ethics. Board Members are required to refuse to surrender their independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. They're also required to hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. And then they also are required to provide accurate information, and in concert with their fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. The last three are that the Board Members will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer, here the superintendent. They will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. And finally, they will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution. So that's the School Board Members' Code of Ethics. So what I'll next go over is the prohibited acts, which are on the following slide. So Section 24 of the Act has 10 subparts, A through J, seven of which set forth various prohibited acts, and then the remaining three explain what's not prohibited. So what I've done the next few slides, starting with this one, is to try to categorize them in a way that's manageable and easily remembered. So first, Section 24A prohibits what I call conflicting interests, which is to say that Board Members cannot engage in business interests, activities, or transactions that are in substantial conflict with the discharge of their duties. So the goal here is that Board Members are acting with the public's interest in mind, not their own. Likewise, 24B prohibits what I will call taking advantage, and that prohibits Board Members from using their position to obtain unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for themselves or others. Similarly, 24C prohibits Board Members from profiting in some fashion from their board service, which is really two parts. First, Board Members can't act in a matter where they or an immediate family member have a direct or indirect financial involvement that might be expected to impair his or her objectivity or independence of judgment. Thus, if a Board Member had a business interest in a certain company, and the board was voting on approving a contract with that company, the Board Member has to abstain from discussing or voting on that contract. Second, it also prohibits acting where the Board Member or his immediate family member has a personal involvement that creates some benefit to the member or his immediate family member. That would include voting on a contract of employment, for example, of an immediate family member who isn't part of the same household. It might not benefit the Board Member financially, but it benefits them by knowing that their immediate family member is employed or gets a raise, et cetera. So that's prohibited as well. On the next slide, we have two more prohibited acts, and Section 24D is what I call conflicting employment, which is the type of employment that would be expected to affect a Board Member's independence of judgment. Section 24E is a really straightforward one, and it's pretty obvious, which is like no quote, pre-quo, no quid pro quo gifts or favors. A Board Member can't accept a gift of any kind if it's offered for the purpose of influencing the Board Member in his or her official capacity. Note, however, that this does not apply to campaign contributions generally, so long as it's not done with the intent to influence the Board Member in the official discharge of his or her duties. The following slide has the remaining two prohibitions. 24F prohibits what I would characterize as self-dealing, which means that the Board Member cannot use information that's not available to the public for securing a financial gain. So for example, having confidential information only available to some Board Members, then using it to buy property or invest in a company or something like that, which would really be, it's kind of like an insider trading type of thing. This doesn't come up often, but that is prohibited. Finally, Section 24G prevents adverse representation, which is exactly what it sounds like. A Board Member can't represent someone in an adverse relationship to the Board of Ed, whether it's a family filing requests for due process against the board, or requesting someone who has a public grievance, or anything like that. The key is that the Board Member's duty is to the school district first. Finally, Sections 24H, I and J, on the next slide, discuss what's not prohibited by those first seven parts. So for example, what I would call insignificant benefits are not an issue. If a Board Member votes on something that provides a benefit to the Board Member because of virtue of his or her membership of a profession, or an occupation, or a business that isn't greater than will be reasonably expected by any other Board Member, then that's fine. So if there was something, I don't know, to use a strange example, if there was something that you voted on that would benefit everyone who owns a deli in town, the fact that you own a deli in town is not benefiting you specifically, isn't a problem. 24I says that if you are making inquiries on behalf of constituent, that is fine, so long as there's no quid pro quo. Thus, if someone asks you, hey, can you see if we can have, you know, XYZ course taught in the schools, or XYZ sport, or whatever, there's no issue. It would be an issue if someone says, and if you can do that, I've got a bag of $1,000 in it, that's all yours. That would be inappropriate. But just asking on behalf of your constituents is totally fine. Finally, if you or your immediate family member has an issue, you're not prohibited from representing yourself or your immediate family member in any proceedings, like a due process complaint against a district that's about your child or anything like that, that's fine. So that sums up the prohibited acts. And if we go to the next slide, before we get to the examples of, or the slide after that actually, of cases that have been decided, let's first talk about avoiding common pitfalls. These are the same as last year, but they always bear repeating, because they're probably the five most common pitfalls. So first, always refer all complaints to the superintendent. That's required by 24.1J. Just don't promise people that you will take care of a situation, only that you'll bring it to the superintendent's attention. That's the role of the Board Member. Second, remember that the Board Member's role is framing policies and plans after consulting with those who will be affected by them. If you fail to do that, that could be a violation of the Code of Ethics. Third, and this particularly comes up if you're volunteering in any fashion, but don't give any orders to staff members. That could be seen as violating 24.1D. That's the section that talks about not administering the district, but making sure that the schools are well-run. If something needs to be done, it's the administration's responsibility to give any directives. On the next slide, we see the issue of referring a friend or someone you know to the superintendent for employment. You just don't want to be seen as trying to use your influence for the gain of friends, because that would violate the Code of Ethics 24.1F. And finally, if there are issues to come up with curriculum, or various procedures, or whatever the case may be, refer those to the superintendent. Let's make sure you're on the side of, I'm doing what is necessary to ensure that the schools are well-run, and not on the side of administering the schools, because the first is okay, the latter is not. So now I'll quickly go through the advisory opinion that came out, as well as some decisions. A0619 addressed a situation where a Board Member was also a bus driver who worked for a vendor that the board uses. You can see that there are a number of possible conflicts here that could arise, and somewhat obvious, but what seemed to be a major concern is that, like many boards, they have a contract with their bus companies that say that if there's a problem with the driver, they will ask the bus company to reassign the driver, and they will do that. And I guess, you know, the question is, would they honor that request if the bus driver is also a Board Member? So the School Ethics Commission reviewed that and said, look, these two positions can coexist, but they cautioned the Board Member that, number one, she would need to recuse herself from many issues that she would otherwise be able to discuss and vote on related to transportation, and frankly suggested that it'd be better if she were reassigned to another route, not in the school district, because her bus company, or the bus company that she worked for serviced other school districts. So in the end, it was acceptable and wasn't an incompatible position, as contemplated by 24A, one of the ones that we talked about before. But there is some caution there. So next, I'll just try to go through, there was about 10 cases or so that talked about problems and Board Members who, you know, basically got in trouble for doing certain things. So the first case, and this is really just, for the most part, chronological order, came out of South Orange Maplewood. There was a Board Member who was pulled over in her town for a traffic violation, and she basically tried to use her board membership to intimidate the police officer and get out of a ticket. That didn't work. It was all on the dash cam footage. It was bad when it came out, because frankly, she didn't comport herself particularly well, and she accused the police chief of being racist. It was kind of a bad scene all around. So the violations here were pretty clear. 24.1E, this is the, anytime I say 24.1, that's the Code of Ethics for Board Members. So subsection E says that Board Members shouldn't take any private action that can compromise the board. When she said the things that she said, which were inappropriate, used expletives, threatened to call the council president of the municipality where the police officer works, that's taking private action that can compromise the board. And this fact that kind of did compromise the board, because it was very difficult from a public relations standpoint thereafter. Additionally, 24.1F says that the Board Members can't use their membership on the board for personal gain. So trying to get out of a ticket because you're a Board Member is basically exactly that. The Board Member tried to say, among other things, that she was having a bad day, that she wasn't trying to intimidate the police officer, that she just kind of blurted it out. Frankly, the judge didn't buy that. What is unusual about this case is that the School Ethics Commission imposed a six-month suspension, but the commissioner, for reasons that are not known to him, decided that was too harsh and reduced that to one month. So the next slide deals with a situation where, this is in Perth and Boy. The association and the superintendent had an acrimonious relationship, and the association was considering a vote of no confidence, or something like that, at an emergency meeting of the association. The Board Member in this case, Puccio, went to that meeting without either approval of the board or their board attorney, and seemingly in support of the association, not the superintendent. The School Ethics Commission found that this had the potential to undermine the superintendent, which violated 24.1E, because it was private action that could compromise the board, and also was administering the schools in violation of Section 24.1D, doing things that were outside the purview of a Board Member. So in that case, again, a little bit strange, the School Ethics Act, the School Ethics Commission, excuse me, recommended a one-year suspension, but the commissioner, again, modified it to 60 days, severely reducing that. So on the next slide, we have the case in West Windsor Plainsboro. That involved a censure of a Board Member who had forwarded an email message about another student in the district that had confidential information about a disciplinary event and consequences to his family members. And when I say, excuse me, the consequences for the student, and he sent that to his family members, in other words, the Board Member's family members, which is a violation right then and there. To make it worse, it then spread like wildfire, and then everybody had it. So that was clearly a violation of 24.1G, which we know requires Board Members to hold confidential all those matters, which if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. The Board Member had kind of a weird defense, which was that this was his personal email account, that really didn't matter. This was a pretty easy and straightforward one, and the fact that it's a personal email account really has no bearing whatsoever. It's still a violation. Next, out of Avalon Stone Harbor, we had a confirmation that you can't decide to start talking with staff members about replacing the superintendent when the superintendent position isn't vacant, which is what Gallagher did right before the board meeting. He pulled the supervisor of curriculum out of the meeting room and said, hey, would you, maybe you'd like to be the superintendent? Which was an awkward situation for everybody involved, because the superintendent was in the other room. So this was not only a 24.1E violation, again, private action that could compromise the board, but also 24.1I, which was a failure to support school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. The consequence was a reprimand in that particular case. In Jersey City, we have the Richardson case, a very strange case. There was a question about whether or not the superintendent's contract was automatically going to renew, or whether it wouldn't automatically renew, whether they had to do a notice of non-renewal. There were really interesting, I guess, questions that came up there, and there were some Board Members who wanted to renew, some Board Members who didn't want to. And the board attorney gave legal advice to the board. For some reason, the Board Member disagreed with it, and then I guess didn't, wasn't able to put the motion on the agenda that he wanted to put on the agenda. So as a result, he filed a petition of appeal against the board on which he served. So that's not normal, and that's not permissible either. So it resulted in a censure. It was a 24.1E violation. It was private action that compromised the board, and he also wasn't authorized to file this proceeding. So that was inappropriate. The key quote there really is at the bottom. If a lone Board Member is unable to convince his or her fellow Board Members of his or her position, and the Board Member's recourse is to address the issue in public or vote against the resolution or action that he may disagree with, the recourse is not for Board Members to take matters in their own hands and file a public proceeding against other members of the board in this particular circumstance. So that's what, that's what that case held. Coming close to the end, here's a few more cases. The Curioni case out of Lodi was really something. That case involved a Board Member who was suspended for six months. That was in December, and the commissioner approved that exact penalty in January. He had a blog where he wrote a lot of nasty things about the association president, who was a preschool teacher in the district. He questioned her integrity, he questioned her salary, he said that she didn't put children first, that she was greedy, using some expletives there, that she was a bully. He posted a photo of the street where she lived and implied that she wasn't qualified to do her job, but suggesting that she got it through political patronage. By the way, parts of his answer to this complaint are available online somehow, and he was not what I would characterize as remorseful. In fact, he kind of doubled down on all of his allegations, and that didn't work as a defense, by the way. So this was kind of like a grand slam. So instead of four runs driven in, he got tagged with four violations. So 24.1E, it's easy to see. He clearly took private action that could compromise the board. 24.1G requires Board Members to only provide accurate information, and when he overstated her, or excuse me, when he overstated her salary by $20,000 a year, he failed to provide accurate information. 24.1I is also pretty obvious. He didn't support personnel and the performance of their duties, and she's a preschool teacher in the district. And finally, the 24.1C violations, those are perhaps the weakest, but they were still a violation. That confines action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and helping frame plans only after the board's consulted with those who have been affected. And what the judge basically held, and the School Ethics Commission agreed with, was that he wasn't a member of the negotiations team. He was acting in a manner that was unrelated to his duty for general rules and principles to guide the school district, and when he made these posts that had gross misrepresentations, they were meant to interfere with negotiations, and that wasn't framing policies and plans before the board consulted with those who will be affected by them. So that was a violation. Two more cases where people got penalties here. The penultimate one here on the next slide was from Patterson. This Board Member was removed from his position. It was kind of a wild case, and it was pretty egregious. A company told them that they would give this Board Member and others an all-expense-paid trip to Arizona, so that he could go to a conference to look at the software that the board might use for its students. They were giving the software away for free, free coding courses, or courses at least for 11th and 12th graders, but there were other programs that the board could buy that were not for free, for first or 10th graders. And the legal department took a look at it, told the administrators and the Board Members, do not go. This is going to be a problem. And the Board Member said, quote, "I'm still going," end quote, and indeed went. In fact, he had the board's security department transport him to the airport. So continuing with the sports metaphors, but moving on to a different sport, this is clearly a slam dunk. This violated 24.1C, because it went beyond policymaking, planning, and appraisal. He's not the person who was going to identify what courses you're going to approve necessarily, or what software that you might use. That's really the administration's job. 24.1E, it was private action that could compromise the board. Certainly, when you see that, the public might think that he wasn't acting in the best interest of the board. And 24.1F, because he was using his position for official gain. And it's odd when you see this, and you see the penalty of removal, and you see some other cases where it wasn't, but the rationale that was given there was that if you did anything short of removal, then that would let Board Members kind of weigh the cost of a reprimand or a suspension against the cost of basically knowingly unethically acting and violating the Code of Ethics for your own personal gain. So they basically said, if we don't remove this guy, it's promoting the unethical acceptance of gifts. So this gentleman was removed. Finally, in the Montague case, the commission censured a Board Member who was essentially encouraging the board to defy the commissioner's order. Just by way of background, for years, Montague students have been able to go to either High Point Regional High School, which is in New Jersey, or Port Jervis, which is in New York. It's a strange situation up there. After a lot of litigation, the commissioner said that, look, there's no sending-receiving relationship with Port Jervis. The board couldn't pay for its kids to go there, but the board president wanted her child to go there and didn't want to pay tuition, which of course was always an option. So she advanced a resolution to enter into an agreement with Port Jervis, even after the commissioner ruled they couldn't, and that would benefit her child and her also, because she wouldn't have to pay tuition. She also attended a Port Jervis meeting as the board president of Montague to kind of push Port Jervis to continue this relationship. So this, there was a whole host of violations here. I mean, 24.1A says that Board Members have to follow all laws, rules, and regulations. She clearly wasn't doing that, because the commissioner's order specifically said, your students need to go, if the board's going to pay their tuition, they need to go only to High Point Regional. 24.1C, she went beyond policymaking and planning. It also violated the prohibited act sections. 24B, seeking unwarranted privileges for herself. 24C, by acting where her child would benefit. And 24F, for using her position to secure financial gain for herself. So in that situation, oddly enough, it was only a censure, but it was a significant penalty there. In summing up, I just want to point to two cases on the next two slides, where there was no violation, but I think are still helpful to see. The first involved Facebook posts and blocking someone on Facebook. The argument about why the Board Member blocked someone is because supposedly there was, I don't know, threatening or harassing conduct to her child at school. In the end, what the commission found was that whatever she was posting was basically any personal opinions on that Facebook page, and if she did post anything, she used a disclaimer. But it was also pretty strict with a disclaimer that had said that they should use, or Board Members should use. And I took it right from the case, which was in all caps and bold and italicized, and it just basically says, the following statements are made in my capacity as a private And it just basically says, the following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen, not in my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinion. So we know that if you're going to do a letter to the editor or certain types of social media postings or things like that, you need to give that disclaimer to make sure that it doesn't turn into private action that could compromise the board, thinking that someone might read it and think, oh, this is the board making this statement, whereas it's just the board member's personal opinion. So that I thought was helpful to know. That's the kind of disclaimer that we should use. And then the last, very last slide here confirms that having a sign on your lawn that's paid for by a community group, and that sign is basically advancing a separate spending proposal, like a referendum type of thing, is totally fine. And, and not only that, telling people on Facebook that I, you know, I can get you one of those signs, just let me know and I'll drop it off, that is also fine. It, it wasn't, you know, surrendering, surrendering her judgment to partisan political or special interest groups. I mean, this is a separate spending proposal that the board is saying they want people to vote yes for. It wasn't taking action that was unrelated to her board meetings. She didn't make any personal promises or actions beyond the scope of her duties. And I think what was really important there in summing up is that they really, she really didn't have to put a disclaimer in her Facebook posts here or these exchanges about helping someone get a sign or anything like that, because that was just in her capacity as a private citizen about dropping off a sign. But if there was any substantive discussion about the proposal, like getting into the details about why they were advocating for the special spending proposal, she did include the necessary disclaimer. So, you know, the, the, I think the takeaway there is that so long as you include the disclaimer when you're talking about positions or opinions or things like that, that's great. If you're chatting with someone on Facebook and saying that you'll drop off a sign that they can put on their lawn, you don't have to put a disclaimer for that kind of thing. So anyway, that's the conclusion of the presentation, which I tried to do without sounding like an auctioneer as best I could. If anyone has any questions, they can let me know, you know, either tonight, if there's questions, or, or anytime thereafter is fine as well. If anyone has a question about certain prohibited acts or, or whether they can participate in negotiations or anything like that, we can certainly answer those.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions that they want to address to Mr. Lapura now? Thank you for that, Beck. That was really helpful.
Okay.
Okay, then our next item on the agenda is public input on the action agenda. And I don't see anything in the Google Doc right now. So I'm reminding people at home that there is an opportunity on the webpage that you're looking at on the HTTPS site to fill out the Google form, and it will come into a Google spreadsheet, and I will read your comment so that all board members are aware. If you, that will be open the whole meeting, though at some point I will close public comment, and then it will just be made available to all board members after the meeting as correspondence. So while we sort of wait to see if anything comes in there, I will open up the agenda for board comment, and this could be public input on the action agenda or public input on the 2021 budget. But let me read the disclaimer first for everybody, for both the public and the, and the board. We very much welcome input from the public. During virtual board meetings, there will be one time during board meetings that the public is invited to submit questions or comments. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes or may choose to discuss any topic. Before you submit your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our virtual public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a public, member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes should not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Okay. I still have not received any public comment, so I will open, open it up for board members' input on the, on any items, the action agenda or the 2021 budget. Board members, of course, will be granted an opportunity later if they, if they need to, to, to comment as well on anything. I actually did just receive something from Sean Kavanaugh. Hello again. Do you know if any of the projects in the December referendum that were supposed to happen this summer will now be postponed due to the coronavirus? Mr. Mahmoud, would you like to answer that, please? I think that one is something that probably many people in the public are interested in learning.
Sure, Dr. Swasan. Thank you for that. We, at the moment, there were a few, there are three major projects that are being worked on, and I'm going to answer the question first and then go through the three projects, if that's okay with you. The, the answer is that we don't anticipate any delays to any of our construction projects that were initially designed for this summer. And the board, the last meeting awarded the HVAC at the high school where we're changing that HVAC unit at the auditorium. That is going to take place over the summer. We have no reason to believe that that won't take place. We awarded the contract at the last meeting. At this meeting, the board is awarding the contract to the roofers for the roofing projects that are getting done this summer. So we anticipate that that project is going to get completed. And then I believe on May 9th, we are opening up the bid for the asphalt and the concrete. That project will also be awarded and, in my opinion, completed by the summer. So, so far, based on the executive order from the governor, school projects are permissible, and we haven't gotten any of our contractors to say that they are delayed or that it wouldn't get completed. So we are excited about this. We know that this is important work, and we look forward to finishing the projects that we scheduled to complete over the summer.
Thank you, Ms. Mahmoud.
Thank you.
I'm just refreshing here to just make sure I didn't get anything else, but I don't see any other public comment. Do any board members wish to make a comment at this time?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Jane.
I'm just wondering, because of the, the extra demands of our current situation, if we've considered temporarily hiring some people to address the added demands, for example, like the extra demands expected of our staff members with regards to online learning, especially coming up so quickly. I don't know if it's too late for that, but I don't know if it's, or maybe some hires already have been made. And also, the extra demands on staff that have to deal with our vulnerable students, such as our students with special needs, and any, any students to, to help them address mental health issues. It seems a lot of the staff are really, aren't able to address all demands that these students have. And there's probably additional students that are dealing with extra stress because of the whole coronavirus crisis. So I just wanted to suggest, if it hasn't already been done, that we maybe do some temporary hires.
Are there any other questions or comments? Dr. Antunes, did you want to address that comment?
Well, we certainly, we do have an HR committee meeting this week, so I'm sure that's something we could talk about there. But I, I can say pretty confidently that our staff members are really, it might not be every day, but they are getting to all of their staff members, all our related services providers are doing that. ESS is also doing their, their sessions via either Google Meet or, or teleconference, something like that. Excuse me. But it's certainly something that we could talk about at HR. I think that our staff members are truly rising to the occasion and often going above and beyond, as you stated, Ms. Stats. So, you know, we're not going to ever say that if we need the help, we're not going to get the help, but we are continuing to fill those positions that are vacant as they become vacant. So we are conducting interviews, we are conducting even demo lessons in some respects. So we are moving forward with that.
No, I, I guess I was talking about hiring temporary people to, to assist staff members, like teachers, with their increased expectation to do online lessons. You know, like computer support teachers to help, additional ones, especially since some were cut last year. And also to hire maybe more counselors or whatever to, to be able to reach, to reach out to students or have, be more available. And again, everyone is going above and beyond, but there's just so many of them and case managers, whatever, and a lot of students that maybe have even more needs now than ever before.
Okay, so this is an item for, that I'm sure the HR committee will be happy to, to take up this week. Thank you, Mrs. Stats. Any other board? You're welcome. Any other board comments before we moved on, we move on to the action agenda? Similarly to last board meeting, we intend to go through, instead of separating into education, human resources, and operations, we're going to move the whole agenda as one, and I'll ask Dr. Antunes to do that in just a second. For board members who are voting, you can vote yes on, on the whole of the agenda. If there's something that you're abstaining on, you can actually say, I vote yes on everything except motion, motion 10.2 or whatever the number is, to which I will abstain. We don't have to actually separate, and that on advice of our attorney, Mr. Lapura. So, Dr. Antunes, with that, can you please review the agenda?
Yes, absolutely. So the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education, HR, and operations agenda as follows. We're going, the motion is to move it as a block. So education 9.1 to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination. 9.2 to approve the submission of the grant application as noted. 10.1 to approve a resolution on, for the HR committee. 10.2 to approve retirements and resignations. And I'd like to point out the retirement of Mr., Mrs. Maureen Danofsky, who after being here since 1987 is going to retire from ATS, as well as Samantha Hillier and Renee Taft. Motion to approve revised sixth period coverage as well as leaves of, revised leaves of absences. Motion to rescind a leave of absence and to approve a long-term substitute. And a motion to approve sixth period coverage. And then the operations agenda, motion to approve the monthly financial statement as well as approve a resolution, a resolution for the high school's summer athletic projects. A motion to award contract for referendum roofing project. A motion to approve resolution regarding the opposition to delay in the tax revenue, A3902. And a motion to approve the resolution, resolution regarding health benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. So I'd just like to point out before we, we vote that there is a resolution for the high school's summer roofing project, which is part of the referendum. There's a, a motion for the athletic facilities, which is not part of the referendum, and that is, that we would use capital reserve for those, for those projects, and some of those are in dire need. So is there any discussion on any of that before we vote? Mrs. Trivia?
I have just a quick question about A3902. What's the current status of that in the legislature? I couldn't find that. It seemed like, it was unclear to me.
So the Senate has not taken that up, as of now. There is some discussion going on with, between the Senate, the governor, about whether or not that will proceed. But that specific resolution passed the Assembly 34 to nothing and would allow municipalities to delay paying, just for the, for the public who might be listening, forwarding their quarterly tax, taxes to schools to support the school. Obviously, we are paying all of our bills and maintaining our staff at this time, so that would be highly disastrous to us. And so many districts are taking, making similar resolutions to states that we are not in favor of this resolution moving forward. The national, the New Jersey School Board Association is also acting and talking to all of our legislators and the governor about the potential of that bill.
So it was not pulled from the Assembly?
It was not pulled from the Assembly.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as, just as a point of clarification, it looks like for A3902, it looks like the Assembly passed it 79 to nothing, but the Senate received it on, on April 9th and has not done anything with it yet.
Right.
So yeah, it hasn't been pulled, right.
Thank you, Mr. Lapura. Mr. Mahmoud, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, Dr. Swasan. We were, both Dr. Antunes and I, we're on a few, every day we do a county call, and it was emphasized at the county level calls that we're on, that the Senate is not interested in the bill the way it's written, and that there would be amendments to that bill. So, and just to let you know that we have spoken to the town and the town CFO, and that we are very confident in, in being able to pay our bills and move forward. If that were to change, we would let everybody know. But right now, we have a high confidence level in our relationship with the town as far as financing, and we have a level of comfort that we'll be able to pay our bills moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmoud. I saw Mrs. Haas raise her hand. But Mrs. Haas?
Yes. I just wanted to report that the Garden State Coalition of Schools reported that this item was sent to the Senate, and it had been placed on its schedule for today and was removed because of the amount of correspondence, phone calls, and the like that it received from a variety of school boards. So it was actually pulled from their agenda for today. So just wanted to contribute that.
Okay.
Hopefully a good sign for its future.
Yeah, so our passing this resolution will become, I guess, another piece of correspondence for them to consider. Is there anybody else who would like to make a statement or provide input at this time? Okay, so we'll have our vote then on, on the whole of the agenda. Mr. Mahmoud, may I ask for a roll call?
Sure. Can we do a motion, Dr. Swasan, in a second?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good. And I'm ready. Dr. Swasan, will I do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm yes with the opposition to item number 11-4. I'm a no.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trivia?
Yes.
And Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
The agenda moves as a whole.
Thank you. Okay, we have informational items as listed. I don't know if anybody has any other comments prior to me seeking a motion to adjourn. We do not have any other public comments, so anything from now on will be listed as correspondence on the next agenda. Any board members wish to add any, any, any input before we adjourn? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn, since I see no request.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Do I have a second? Sorry, I didn't catch who that was.
Dr. Antunes.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Okay, all, all in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposing? Anybody abstaining? Okay, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody, especially Mr. Handler for making sure this went off smoothly. Stay healthy, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night.